Call the order of the town of New Windsor Town Council meeting for November 6, 2024. If there are one would rise with me and join with me in the same allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our meetings are recorded electronically. We go by an agenda. Anyone wishing to have something on the agenda for decision making by the council should have had it to the town hall by three o'clock of the previous Wednesday of the last Wednesday of the month prior to our meetings. Anyone wishing to speak tonight, we ask you to sign up over here on the sign in sheet and will be addressed at the end of the meeting. Ready approval of minutes from the October 2, 2024 town council meeting. They've been emailed out to everybody.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second. We have a motion second to approve the minutes from the October 2 town council meeting. Any comments or questions? All those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. All right, mayor's report. I met with Tammy Ray to discuss potential assistance that the town could provide while the Vietnam War Memorial Wall is in town next year. And there's a couple of different options that we'll be looking at in the coming months. Of course, I attended musical on the main event and want to thank everyone for their help in making this year's event a great success. And I have begun working on a checklist for the planning of next year's musical on the main. So everybody knows what needs to be done. Councilman Huffman, if you could give me a little blurb on when you need the resolution and the special event permit.
Okay.
That way I can put add that into it. Attended the municipal leadership dinner at Antrim, 1844 with Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. I had the opportunity to network with Secretary Jake Day and discuss the rescue to residents grant project. He seemed very positive about the project. And I followed up last week with Sarah Jackson, who's the project manager of Department of Housing and Community Development about the grant, and she stated that it was her team's favorite project. She said I should be getting a phone call within two weeks. So that was last week. So hopefully this week or next week. And I attended luncheon for Alan Toberry's sixth anniversary with the town. So I want to just recognize Alan for six years of great service to the town. Attended Heidelberg Materials Community Council Dinner and talked with the new plant manager, Walter Smith. He had some very interesting things to discuss about the power lines, path along the new Windsor quarry, which I'll get into under Lehigh Report or Update. And I sent a letter, funding request letter to Governor Moore for his fiscal year 26 general budget. It included 500,000. Well, actually, I asked for a million dollars, but I said we'd be happy with $500,000 for Deoming Inn and funding for, even though it's not our funding that we're getting, but for state highway administration to complete the streetscape project. And I drafted a town of New Windsor in response to the Maryland's Piedmont Reliability Project for tonight's meeting, which we'll discuss. And then one thing, I was really shocked. Last Thursday night, Halloween night, I handed, well, my wife and I handed out more candy this past year or last week than I think we have in, really probably close to 50 years. I've never seen so many kids come in, which was great. So, and I want to thank everybody that did hand out candy. But it was nice to see that many kids again. So, and then down at the bottom there, a lot of meetings I attended. The Franklin G Shafer Memorial 5K. And then again, thank Gary and everybody for putting that on. So that is my report. Council committee reports, community enhancement. Councilwoman Schultz?
Good evening, everyone. So we had an internal discussion with the staff and we decided to reschedule the Christmas tree lighting to Sunday, December 8. When we sort of looked at the calendar, we realized that the first was Thanksgiving weekend, which, you know, is a busy time for a lot of people. Plus the make it hard for the public work staff to get all the decorating done that they do for the town. So that's been changed and there's going to be announcements, right Dana, going out and updated on the website and Facebook, et cetera. So put that on your calendar. That's a great event. And I talked with Councilman Kornak and he's agreed to take charge of getting the tree again. So thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome. And this year, if I might interrupt for a sec, when I was wondering, could we maybe increase the size of the tree? Because the pre-cut trees, I think, are 10 to 12 maximum. I don't know what size ball that is, but I was thinking from last year, I think we had an eight footer. And I was thinking if we could get a 12 footer and still fit in that bucket or maybe get a bigger bucket, it might kind of make a, that's a, I think a 12 footer might be not a good size, but I don't want to go do that and have you guys not be able to get it there.
So we should be able to do it. It'll be a lot easier with the excavator.
Oh, yes.
Setting it in there. So, and now with that other tree gone, access is better.
Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
Okay, so stay tuned. Another thing that the staff thought of, Clerk Treasurer Magnuson, Kim Hersch, her administrative assistant, was about doing a toy drive. And we reached out to a couple of organizations and one said, HSP specifically, said, thank you, but they already had a lot of support and we have not heard back from Toys for Tots. So if anybody has any suggestions, we're happy to hear them. Otherwise, we might just table that project until next year.
Lions Club usually sponsors or adopts a couple of families.
Okay, do you all need help enough? Okay, we can talk about that somewhere. Okay, great. And then I'm continuing to research ways to spend the $1,000 that we are getting from tourism. Right now, mostly focusing on signage. So stay tuned. And Councilman Frock, who's not here tonight, and I are meeting next week to talk about economic development in our subcommittee. The shop small passport starts this weekend. Those are going to be in, I think, seven vendors in New Windsor. So start looking for those and pick them up and you can use them at any of several hundred businesses in all the municipalities around Carroll County. If you get, I think it's nine businesses, it might be seven. But anyways, you get that many to initial your form. You can put it into, you bring it to town hall and leave it here at the end of the passport process, which is the first week in December, second week in December. And then your name can be put into a drawing for $50 gift certificates that are funded by tourism and can be used at any of the participating businesses. So it's a great way to get people to shop at local businesses. It doesn't cost the business anything. It doesn't cost you anything extra. And, you know, it's been going on, we're in our seventh or eighth season. So that is my report.
Public Works, Councilman Huffman?
Good evening, everyone. Public Works highlights for the past month include, Public Works had New Windsor looking its best for the music on the main festival. They were instrumental in the setup and teardown both before and after the event. Public Works participated in the setup for the Franklin G Shafer Memorial 5K. And the Public Works also held the town's bulk trash day on October 12th. Two dumpsters were filled with items that typically would not be collected during the weekly trash pickup. So I want to publicly thank the Public Works crew for overseeing and staffing this community service event. And I want to thank the entire town staff for their efforts and coordination in making all three of those events successful. So thank you to all the, Public Works has started leaf pickup this week. Please place your leaves in bags or containers weighing less than 30 pounds. The planning commission, we ended up, did not meet in October due to some last minute attendance conflicts. We will also not be meeting in November due to the holiday and some attendance issues. Our next scheduled meeting is Monday, December 30th at 6:00 PM. And please note, this meeting is postponed date from the regularly scheduled meeting date of the 23rd. So we bumped our meeting from the 23rd to the 30th so that we could have one. Some councilman highlights, I attended the town council scheduled meetings, attended the music on the main event set up through teardown and road reopening, which was a great success afterwards. We did a great job getting that road open quickly. Attended the luncheon for Alan Toberry's 60 year anniversary and also attended the Heidelberg Materials Community Meeting.
Thank you. Warren Sewer, Councilman Hall?
All right. So starting off, the sewer lining project has been completed. For those that don't know about the sewer lining, INI is a big issue with sewer, where it's where storm water comes into the pipes. And so a proper study costs a lot of money. For a fraction of the cost, we could actually line the pipes, the existing pipes and stop that infiltration of water. So that was a big success. We got lower Main Street, Hillside Avenue, Lambert Avenue, Mill Avenue, Lower Church Street and the 300 to 400 block of Church Street. Looking forward, because of that success, we're looking at Maple Avenue, the 200 block of Church Street, Union Bridge Road and Water Street for additional sewer lining. The MDE water source inspection went pretty well. This is a normal inspection that we always get. Historically, MDE has had concerns about mainstream, but due to the diligent effort of the town, the installation of some water buffer zones and redundant check valves, we got really good reports from that area. And during the sewer lining, we also discovered a water leak on the 100 block of Main Street. And Public Works has continued investigating on that. And that's my report.
Thank you. Public Safety and Health, Councilman Kornak?
Good evening to our citizens who are watching online and certainly our folks that are here. Thank you for coming out. I attended several meetings this month. First of all, music on the main, which we mentioned previously. Obviously, it was a major success in my opinion. And thank you to the fire department for their assistance in setting up and all the folks with the town that did that as well. Also attended the meeting with Maryland's Department of Housing and Community Development. That was, I forgot what it's called. Secretary Day. I met with him at the Carroll County office building. I also connected with Chuck Cook, who is the chief legislative officer there. The focus of the meeting was discussing initiatives on affordable housing. And then division of policy and strategy is Chuck Cook's expertise. Also attended the Vietnam Traveling Wall Memorial Committee meeting on 10/10. That was held at the VFW Post 8806 in Union Bridge. It was an informational meeting. There will be a website set up for additional information that they're currently working on now. The committee is looking for volunteers for areas, all areas of the exhibit for next year. And again, that meeting or that exhibit will be October of 2025. Our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, January 9, 2025 at 6:00 PM. And again, it'll be at the VFW in Union Bridge. Also participated as a volunteer for the Frank G Shafer 5K Memorial at Wakefield Valley. Have a little bit of information. I use that path to, my wife and I use it to ride our bikes there. I spoke to Kevin Dayhoff Saturday, and he mentioned that Westminster found $2 million that they're going to use to upgrade that park. They're going to upgrade the walkway and add additional features to it for it to be a state of the art walking path and bicycle path. So I thought that was awesome because it'll make my ride a little smoother. Also attended the Heidelberg Materials Community Council meeting, which the mayor mentioned and Councilman Hoffman mentioned. And that was in Union Bridge. Upcoming meetings for me would be the opioid prevention coalition meeting on 11/13 next week at 9:00 AM. And that's, as always, held at the Carroll County Health Department. And that's my report.
Thank you. Economic development, I have Councilman Frock's report. He engaged in conversations with Fire Chief Steve Primer, former chief Tom Coe, and other members of the fire company regarding the town fires iron locations, pattern and hours of operation to pursue a solution that benefits the citizens of New Windsor, but also enable the fire company to operate at the same level of readiness and availability. The matter was discussed at the fire company board meeting on 10/30 and was positively received. I will provide another update next month. There'll probably be an update probably within, probably at our work session. Been working with those two individuals. And I also met with Hanky Radio to take a look at our system or the system to see what options are made. And there still needs to be a few more meetings within the fire department to make final decisions on that. Scheduled meeting with Councilwoman Schultz on 11/12 to discuss the economic development, probably 10/12, to discuss the Economic Development Committee and the path forward for the town. He attended the council work session on 10/21. He wants to thank everyone who handed out candy this year for Halloween. Residents always make it a special night for the kids and it is very much appreciated. Town manager report.
All right, good evening. The Maryland 31 Water Main Project Mid-Atlantic remains on schedule. They're coming down the stretch here. The latest schedule has completion by early to mid-December before winter and the cold weather. The Springdale Prep School building permit for Windsor Hall, town center letter November 1st in response to Springdale's letter received September 16. Copies in tonight's folder. Email response yesterday from Springdale's attorney. They agree to pay all the fees. I sent the response back to them, providing additional information of items needed to prepare the invoice and a process timeline moving forward. The Frank Shafer Memorial 5K, the 4th 5K was held October 19th and it was a great success. We had 81 participants registered online and 10 walk-ups. Great weather this year. We'll try to have the total revenues and expenditure numbers ready for the November work session and have Karen Carroll and Westminster Road Runners Club attend to receive the proceeds checks with the December work session as a backup. The lead and copper rule revisions, the EPA, which is a federal agency mandated all public water systems in the United States to inventory the water service connections within their system. MDE, which is a state agency oversees the administration of the LCRR for Maryland and developed a very detailed required inventory. Windsor submitted our initial inventory by the deadline of October 16th and that inventory is yearly until all the system is up to current, all the leads removed, basically. Water systems must notify water customers whose service lines are either lead, galvanized, requiring replacement or lead status unknown by November 15th. And the letter templates were available from the EPA and MDE that contained required information. And the town manager and Public Works director developed letters that contain both the required info and additional info. Letters are in tonight's folder. And the letters went out to approximately 75 customers yesterday, November 5th, ahead of the deadline. You develop a rights and responsibilities agreement. Town manager, Director Myers, Attorney Ostrander met on October 28th to review and revise the draft. Attorney Ostrander is preparing a second draft to be presented to the mayor and council for review at a future meeting. Just some upcoming meetings. November 18th work session has been moved to Wednesday. Is that correct? We're moving on the 20th. Wednesday, December 4th, council meeting, going to be out of town there. I won't be able to attend that. And then Monday, December 16th is the work session. And then looking ahead, first couple of meetings in January and February. January 1st is New Year's Day. And I know a lot of people are often out of town, myself included. Monday, January 20th work session falls on the Martin Luther King Holiday. And the Monday, February 17th work session falls on President's Day Holiday. Typically push those a day, but just getting that out. And that's my report.
Thank you. Public Works Director?
Good evening, everyone. I attended musical on the main for setting up in the morning. This year, we split the Public Works Department into two crews. I think that was relatively successful and helped with the breakdown. Want to thank the fire department for their assistance with the tables and chairs. It was definitely a big help. Saved us several hours of time. So thank them for that. I also volunteered at the Frank Shafer Memorial Run. And as Councilman Hall mentioned, we discovered a potential water leak at the 100 block of Main Street when we were sewer lining. So we CCTV the inside of the lines before we pulled the liner through. And we noticed that there was an infiltration of water that was quite significant. It was distant from nearby or distant from a manhole. So we weren't able to take a water sample. The water hasn't surfaced yet and we haven't been able to detect the leak with our leak detection equipment to pinpoint exactly where it is. But with New Windsor being named originally software springs, the area of 100, the 100 block of Main Street is prone to springs and there could be a spring there that was infiltrating the sewer system. A couple of project updates. The town hall HVAC system, Jim is supposed to have the equipment this week. They're going to reach out to us to try to schedule a time to replace each unit one at a time. So we're not inconvenienced because it's starting to get cold outside. The MD 31 project, Mid-Atlantic has finished installing the water main, but still has to install laterals. Most of the laterals on the odd numbered side of Main Street are complete and were successful. We encountered probably four galvanized services that will need replace per the lead removal requirement and galvanized needing replacement mandated by the state. As Councilman Hall mentioned, the water source inspection went very well. The town made significant investments in most of our water facilities and even our main spring site. They were very happy with that. They were happy with our control parameters that we have on the SCADA system. So we expect a clean bill of health from them. Generator install at Bowersocks that was approved using ARPA money. We ran into a little snag. The generator set, the electrical permit passed and the installation of the propane tank and the propane lines and fittings passed. But the county is requiring us to put bollards in front of the tank because it's near an adjacent driveway. The cost is a couple thousand dollars outside of the scope of the project. And so Public Works is going to try to install the bollards ourselves when we get some time. But we've been busy with seasonal chores with leaf pickup and street sweeping and things like that. And that's my report.
Thank you. Community deputy, microphone please.
All right. Got a pretty long report here because I guess the last time I was here was August 7th, standing before you guys. And I just want to say thank you guys for all the support and understanding with my newborn child at home. And I do really appreciate all of that. So between August 7th and November 6, 2024, the Carroll County Sheriff's Office responded to 157 calls for service within the town of New Windsor. Out of those calls for service, 10 were reportable. On 8/8/2024 at 12:05 AM, an overdose was reported around the 300 block of Church Street. Now, loxum was administered and the subject was transported to Carroll Hospital Center for further care. On 8/18/24 at 11:45 AM, an assault was reported in the 100 block of Church Street. The victim was charged, or not charged, the victim was allegedly egged by a passerby in a pickup truck. The victim did not wish to pursue charges in this case. On 8/22/24 at 9:37 PM, a hit and run accident was reported in the 100 block of Main Street. The suspect was later identified and the damages were worked out civilly amongst both parties. On 8/22/24 at 10:30 PM, a vandalism was reported in the 100 block of Main Street. The victim advised that he was out to dinner and after he left, his tire fell off his vehicle. The lug nuts had allegedly been removed from the vehicle. Vehicle was wheel wise, was parked in the area. So that was an interesting one. On 10/2/24 at 5:03 PM, an assault was reported in the 2800 block of New Windsor Road. The suspect alleged that while walking along the edge of the roadway, they were almost struck by a vehicle. Some gestures were made back and forth amongst both parties. And the vehicle then pulled in to the 7-Eleven. The driver of the vehicle got out and punched the subject multiple times and then fled the area. On 10/20/2024 at 1:00 PM, a traffic stop was completed at Main Street and High Street. The driver was charged for operating the motor vehicle without a license. On 10/23/24 at 6:23 PM, a harassment was reported in the 2800 block of New Windsor Road. The victim advised that they were being contacted willingly by an ex. Piece of words were recommended to the party and on top of all their options. On 10/26/24 at 4:39 PM, an unintended death was reported in the 2800 block of Carlisle Drive. The investigation revealed this occurred from natural causes. On 10/29/24 at 12:53 PM, a harassment was reported in the 1200 block of Overley Way. This case is ongoing. On 10/15/24 at 3:00 PM, a death was reported on Spiller Line, right? I got that correct? One of these days, I'm going to get that correct. Drive and Brownie Drive. An iPad was stolen from Trans Systems after it was placed on the hood of a pickup truck. They were just out there doing work and they placed their iPad on the hood of the pickup truck. It was gone within a matter of minutes. So that was reported as well. As far as citizens' concerns, of course, being off for a few months, I received a few emails and everything else following up on a few citizens' concerns. There's been a lot of traffic diversion from utility work on Main Street. And a lot of people are getting frustrated and trying to go around. And I knew College Avenue was kind of taking a grunt of that. So speed signs are out there now. Whenever I get a chance, I'm sitting up there and I get more stop sign violations on speed in that location. But I've had quite a few stop sign violations in that area. So just wanted to let you guys know. That's one of the traffic complaints I received and we're working on that. And I just, anybody that's watching, just use as much patience as possible because this work is not going to be forever. And we're all in it together. So we'll make sure we're safe getting down the road. And then as far as other resources, 988, I always mention that if anybody is experiencing a crisis or they need to call somebody just to talk to them, 988 is available to you. That's pretty much all I got.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations again. Treasurer report?
All right, the fiscal year 24 audit has been submitted on October 30th. It met the deadline for November 1st. At the work session, Mike Sampson of ZA will be here to present his findings. While reviewing the handbook, we came up with, I came across town bonds. And both myself, town manager and the mayor were a little unsure of what we were actually bonded for. So I reached out to Dave Ballinger with Barnes &amp; Ballinger and I got some information and I think we should reevaluate this. So we currently have a blanket bond that protects the town from any illegal or unethical behavior carried out by any employee and council is included. However, our premium and what we are covered for is only a $10,000 loss. So after speaking to Dave and having a couple of conversations, we agreed that we both need to up it. I have two premiums here. So we have $100,000 premium with a $1,000 deductible. That would be a 184 year or a $250,000 with a $2,500 deductible at 225. We currently pay 164. So I would just leave you know if you guys wanted to up that or not.
Definitely from 10,000.
I would strongly agree. It would be me, that would be me. Yes. I 110% understand it. It would be more on me than anybody else. But I strongly recommend that we up this.
Minimum of 100,000?
I would say minimum and I would look at the 250 if I was you, just to be safe. Because we do have funds.
Probably 250 is probably not a whole lot of premium. A lot higher premium than the 100,000.
So the 250 with the deductible, 250 and it's 225 a year. The other one is 184.
I'd go with 250. Everybody all right?
I'm all right with that.
Do you have a motion or can I just?
Just like a motion.
I have a motion to prove the bond be $250,000.
I'll make that motion.
I second.
Yeah, motion second for the bond to be $250,000. Yeah, motion second for the bond to be $250,000. Although, sing by me, sing aye.
Aye.
As opposed, so carry.
Awesome. And then the quarter one for the fiscal year 25 has been completed. I sat down and reviewed some numbers with both town manager and Public Works. We're very early, it's not a lot to report. Just some highlights on income for general fund. Income tax is about $129,967 we've already received. $43,511 from highway user revenue. Cell Tower is looking in line as well. Again, all areas for this is in line. Talking about expenses, dues are over by $500. I expected that with the increasing of pricing with MML. Not much we can do, but it discussed it at the next budget meeting with Gary, which should be soon. And we're going to watch postage. We've had a lot go out, so. On the enterprise side, income, all falling in line. Nothing really to talk about there. For expenses, on water, three Rs and capital ers, two areas of concern. And it's mainly due to the fact that we had to relocate some ARPA funding. So I've already got Public Works Director Myers and Gary. We're keeping an eye on that. We're rearranging when we can. It's not too concerning right now, but considering that we are the first quarter, it's a little, it was a little red flag for me. But again, we're watching our spending there. For sewer, MES is falling in line, and everything else looks pretty good in that spot. So I expect mid-year is when we'll really see some numbers come in, and we'll start talking there. But nothing there.
All right. Thanks for the update.
No problem.
Thank you. Back to Public Works Director. With it being dry, and we had a leak, and the lining has been fairly completed, have we seen a decrease in any, in?
I don't know.
In, well, any increase or any decrease in what goes into the?
So we haven't had enough rain to really?
No, but without the rain, if we had a water leak that was possibly getting into it?
Oh, yes. Yeah, so we noticed that we've also oddly enough been using less water than we typically do, which is, which is good. Main Spring usually pumps around 50,000 to 55,000 gallons a day, and we've had several days where we've only pumped 33,000 gallons, which is awesome. And a lot of times, you know, it's a seasonal change when people aren't washing their cars or watering their lawns and things like that. But I would contribute that to possible lateral leaks on Main Street. When we shut the main down and went to the bypass, the water usage dropped. So very good investment replacing the Main Street and High Street line.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Went to ask you that earlier. Water and sewer, water and sewer billing clerk, we have a report?
She didn't have, she'll have one ready for.
Enforcement, John?
Yeah.
Hello, everyone. I did not get any complaints about anything directly in October. I am continuing with abandoned vehicles. I have three that are in a follow-up status. I have one that was properly tagged and is operable and was moved, and shows that it was moved. And I do have one vehicle that was removed. I don't know if you noticed the black box. And then I have three more others that are going out this week in reference to an operable and untagged vehicle. And any complaints or any good thing anybody sees, I'm available by email, so just let me know.
Thank you. One from West Carroll Rec Council. Fire chief, he wasn't sure if he was going to be here back in town in time, but he did send me a text message. Please advise everyone that there is a statewide burn ban, and in fact, until further notice, no outside fires at all. If we get dispatched, we will extinguish them. That means fire pits as well, so no open fires. Lehigh update. I talked to camp manager today to make sure that what I was going to say was, got his blessing. With the power lines and the route that we'll talk about in a little bit under new business, it goes along 31 along the New Windsor Quarry, which I'm not sure what the right-of-way is for that, but I'm guessing it's pretty extensive along with the towers itself.
150 feet.
150 feet. So that's cutting into their quarry. And we're talking probably millions, hundred millions, maybe billions of dollars over the next 65 years. So there's state land use article. And I'll just, I'm not going to read everything, but just what he highlighted it. But mineral resources element shall identify, to the extent feasible, to prevent the preemption of mineral resources extraction by other uses. So that would mean that they couldn't extract minerals from that 150 feet. And then another mineral resource wherein any land uses that preempt resource recovery are prohibited for a VRA, I'm not exactly sure what that is, viable resource area. Thank you. Where, I've read the paragraph before, but where potentially recoverable mineral resources have been identified and will be protected from preemptive development. So they have, you know, their attorneys working long and hard on this. So when they did the plant expansion years ago, they spent hundreds of millions and then a couple hundred million at least for the conveyor belt, with the understanding that they were going to have life of 60, well, 75 years, but now it's down to 65 years of use of that quarry. And, you know, I'm sure that, and that state, that's, the county has it as well, but with it being the state, I think that's probably going to carry more weight.
Let's hope so. The county master plan, or rather, the county code has extensive language in it about the mineral resource area, which I know because I worked on it when I was working for the county. That's why I'm sitting here going, oh, yeah, I hadn't thought about that. So it will be interesting because that's a very large emphasis in the state is on preserving the ability to extract those minerals, and not just limestone, wherever they are. And it covers a whole lot of territory out there.
Yeah. And they're not, they're not fighting this so that it's not on their land and on somebody else's there. They just feel that there's other better ways of getting?
They're not alone in that.
Getting the thing, the electric issue taken care of, so. But I just thought that was an interesting point that, that, you know, they're highly affected by it, so. And that's a wrap right here outside of town. New business, mayor and council statement regarding local impacts of the proposed power line project. And I will read that in entirety. Normally I wouldn't, but I think it's pretty important to read. Town of New Windsor, response to the Maryland Piedmont Reliability Project. The town of New Windsor is addressing the proposed PSEG power line project, which includes a route that goes across our main water line right-of-way. In the past few years, the town has experienced several major breaks and other issues that were handled instantly, allowing water to be restored as soon as possible. If this power line is approved, the town may be required to notify the power entity overseeing the project of a water line break. Depending on the day of the week or time of day, this could take an unacceptable long time. This could result in a loss of water and water pressure that our citizens' health and safety depend on. The town opposes the Maryland Piedmont Reliability Project, MR, MP RP, and will do everything within its authority to ensure this project will not affect our town or our residents. This project does not benefit our citizens or the citizens of Carroll County, and is primarily being built to meet the electricity low growth of data center development in Northern Virginia. Moreover, it infringes on the property rights of our friends and neighbors, a concern that cannot be overlooked. Our community is blessed with a vibrant agricultural heritage and a unique charm that must be preserved for future generations. The proposed project poses a risk to our local environment and the scenic beauty that makes our community special. We must take a stand to protect what makes New Windsor a great place to live. We recommend PSEG to consider a combined cycle power plant, CCPP, which uses both gas and steam turbines to produce electricity. In a combined cycle setup, natural gas is burned to power a gas turbine, and the resulting waste heat is used to produce steam, which drives a steam turbine. This two-stage process can achieve efficiencies of over 60%, reducing fuel consumption emissions per megawatt of electricity generated. CCPPs are flexible, provide reliable base load and peak power, and are increasingly popular for cleaner, high-efficiency energy production in the power sector. Can be quickly built on-site and customized to size to meet the needs of a data center. We know that voices of Carroll County are being heard and need to continue to be heard. While the comment window with PSEG has closed, the Maryland Public Service Commission, PSEC, has opened a dedicated email for collecting comments from the community. If the developer files an application and the commission opens a case, those comments will be added to the public comments file, so the commission has the benefit of the public's views. The email address to leave comments for the PSEC is piedmontcomments.psc@marilyn.gov. We encourage you to share your thoughts with the PSEC. The town, along with our state legislators, county commissioners, and other organizations, will continue to fight the project and ensure that people have the opportunity to make their voices heard. Let's continue to work together to protect the future of New Windsor and Carroll County and preserve its natural beauty for generations to come. Neil C. Rock, Mayor of Town of New Windsor. And I sent this out to everybody. I think everybody was in support of this. Councilman Frock wanted to just express, he sent me a little blurb, what he thought, and I kind of incorporated a little bit of that into it, but he was supportive of this statement. So I think not only we do send or put this on our website, but, you know, send it to either PSEC or everyone, as many people as possible, send to PSEC. I forget how many thousands of comments they already have, but everyone has to be documented. So it's going to take a while for everybody to take a look at the Public Service Commission, to take a look at all that, so. And Councilman Schultz sent me some comments that I'll take a look at, and I didn't have time this afternoon to take a look and see what not.
It was minor stuff.
But if everybody's okay with that, we approve this statement.
Yeah, for the record, I'll state that I'm wholeheartedly in support of sending the letter and making it public by putting it on our website. I thought it was pretty comprehensive in your approach to what effects it would have on the community. I think we should send it, so. With any additions that you might have.
Well, I'll probably send it out to our delegation as well, and other committees that may want to speak tonight. But I want to thank the town of Hampstead because I use some of their language, but also Spruance Village resident Roy Stevens, who retired as an engineer, and he's the one that, you know, suggested that, you know, after permitting these little, I'm not sure exactly what you call them other than the combined cycle power plants can be up and running in two years. So, and it's cleaner, and it's designated just for that data center. Doesn't affect, you know, your countryside and right-of-way and everything, so. Well, not, we'll take a look at that, but hopefully our county commissioners and I'm sure they're on top of different things that we've already discussed. Phil, how many farms are in farm preservation?
Not quite sure.
Thirty some?
I'm not quite sure, 30 or 50, but there's along the entire seven mile line, there's 1,300 acres of preserved farmland that will be affected.
And I've made it known to the commissioners and also the delegation that when Lehigh built the conveyor belt, anything that went through a farm preservation had to be buried. And to me, that's a utility, basically, and this is a utility. And anything that goes under or goes through farm preservation, they should have to bury it. But, but I've had, you know, I think what's right for one should be across the board. So Dana, if you or Kim can post that on our Facebook page.
There's a word for it. I put it on a town letterhead.
All right. I saw that, thank you.
So if you want to edit and put a date on it, it's?
That's fine. Thank you.
It should have a date.
Thank you. Any other comments? I think we all staying together on this.
I haven't heard too many people who don't.
No.
Yeah.
So apparently they're going out and about and looking at properties now, so. All right. Use of Lions Club Field for October 2025 Vietnam Memorial Event. Tammy Ray wanted me to bring this up. The Lions Club Ball Field, they would like to have Vietnam-era equipment, apparatus, vehicles placed on there. And I said it would be dependent upon, you know, weather prior to, if it was two weeks of rain before, might not be the best thing to put it on there. Or if it's raining, you know, maybe wait until it dries until you remove it. But the bottom line was, you know, we would want the field to be as good or better condition than when they brought it on. And I don't think anybody's going to disagree with that. So everybody all right with that? All right.
I do have a question about that. We have a MOU. Are they, do they utilize that field in the fall? I know that some teams play fall ball, but I didn't know if that would interfere.
Have to check the schedule, but they have a fall schedule through the end of November at least.
This year.
But that MOU states that we have first rights to it.
Time to give them the dates, too.
Yeah, I don't have any schedules for next year.
Right.
Usually they go through November each year for fall ball.
Yeah, well, interestingly enough, they, didn't they have a tournament the week we did the musical on the main? Yeah, yeah, so.
So just keep that in mind. Everybody's all right with that? Okay. New old business. Old business, employee handbook, final comments. I think it's time to adopt it. We have a resolution. It will be 11-6-24. Any lasting comments? Everybody's all right with it?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Dana and Gary. Spent a lot, Wayne spent a lot of time on it. And now I think it's up to, up to speed, and I would recommend going forward that it be reviewed annually, so that we're not three years, five years behind. You know, so whether you pick a date, you know, whatever, possibly after at least every other year, right after the elections, the new council members or mayor would know more about the handbook than anything any other time. All right, so do I hear a motion to adopt resolution 11-6-24?
I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the employee handbook resolution 11-6-24. Although in favor, sing by me, sing aye. Aye. As opposed? There you go. It's official. And War Memorial Park Cannon Restoration. Back a couple years ago, Wayne got prices for materials. $5,000 per cannon, that's the War Memorial Cannons right next door here. They were Japanese cannons that were captured and used as war bond commercials, advertisements. So they are in need, and plus, it's probably the best time to do it so that they look nice. Because I imagine there will be a lot of people in town next year for the Vietnam War Memorial Wall, and probably will want to sit here and maybe meditate, you know, just relax, whatever. So it would be nice if those cannons looked nice. Wayne, you want to follow up on what I just said?
Yeah, so in 2010, the cannons were refurbished for $5,600 apiece. And so it was in March of 2023 when Councilwoman Lindeman and I reached out to Eclectic after they expressed interest in restoring them, and the price was $5,000 for the pair. So that's for the pair. I think they will hold that price now, after talking with them, even though the materials went up, but we should probably get something in writing from them to make it official. And that is new wheels and everything. So the wheels would get sent out, built by the So, the wheels would get sent out, built by the Amish, and then brand-new wheels because those are severely deteriorated, and they have Bondo in them, so they would be solid. And Eclectic Motor Company, they're very good restoration. It's funny that they want to do this because they work on million-dollar cars and Ferraris and Lamborghinis and all that kind of stuff. But Brad actually worked for the company that restored them back in twenty-ten, Cannons Online, and that guy's since passed away, so. It's a good project. I think it's a good timing, and it'll make the memorial park look that much better.
And just make sure we do not want them working, because we had that option last time. That was an option.
Have you talked to Eclectic?
I have, yeah.
So they're still willing to do work?
Yeah, they're still willing to do it, yeah.
So we needed to get an agreement with them about the work.
So, I've been feeling like there was something, why did we not do this? Does anybody remember? Because I feel like there was some question at the time.
Gary went back and looked in minutes and everything and couldn't find.
I didn't see anything.
The only thing that I have is an email, and I think it was a budget thing. It wasn't something that we budgeted for. And I believe we were trying to reach out to the company that restored them the first time to give them the opportunity to bid, but the gentleman's since deceased, so.
So I think what I remember, and I'd done a little research to help find some information. I think that at the time when we got this from Sharon and the offer to do it, we did not know how much that we spent the first time to restore those cannons. And I think it just got lost in the shuffle after that, and we never got back together to, because.
Well, that was at the same time we were buying the stars for the telephone poles and.
Yeah, there was a lot of stuff going on.
Small line item budget for parks was eaten up.
Eaten up, right.
So do we have that in that budget line item?
Um, I have to double-check.
We'd have to do some money, probably.
Yeah, probably.
Some money. It's coming from budget in our fund. It's not a worry for me.
Yeah. Yeah, that would definitely be a challenge.
It could be a town activity.
So either for the work session or the December meeting.
Definitely for the work session.
So, Gary, you're gonna, do you want me to do something?
No, we just need the, we just need an agreement.
Okay, so you're gonna do that?
All right. Any other old business? All right, residents concerned?
We have, I believe, a Mr. and Mrs. Warden.
If you would take the microphone and state your name and address, please. It's not for us, it's for the viewers, so they can hear you.
Layla Warden, thirty-two, twenty-two, Alley Rich Road. Ladies and gentlemen of the Town Council and Town of New Windsor, my name is Layla Warden. I'm a child of God, wife of Navy veteran Matthew Warden, a mom, an active-duty Navy sailor, and a first-time homeowner. My husband and I chose New Windsor as our home last December, closing on the most beautiful house the Lord prepared for us. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, to allow us to speak today. I bring a proposal that will honor our town's legacy and strengthen our community's connection to the land God had blessed us with. I'm asking that we consider revising our zoning laws to allow residents to keep chickens on their properties, an act that aligns with our history, our values, and principles that have always been at the heart of the American way. For generations, the American dream has included the idea of self-sufficiency, the belief that we can work the land, grow our own food, and provide for our families. This was the way of life for countless generations of Americans, and it is a way we can still embrace today. Here in New Windsor, with our fertile land and rural charm, we are in a unique position to revive this tradition. New Windsor's roots are deeply agricultural, stretching back to the seventeen hundreds, and that legacy still lives on in a way, in the way that we care for our homes and our land. Our neighbors in Carroll County, including towns like Tanning Town and Westminster, have already embraced the practice of allowing chickens with minimal restrictions. There's no reason why we can't follow their example. This proposal allows up to ten chickens per two thousand square feet, meaning a ten thousand square foot lot could house up to fifty chickens. Chickens need about two to three square feet per bird in a coop, and for free-range conditions, at least ten-plus square feet outdoors to thrive. Most residential properties have ample space to provide a safe, healthy environment for chickens without overcrowding or disrupting neighbors. Raising chickens offers more than just fresh, healthy eggs. It's about food security. In a world where food prices are rising and supply chains are becoming increasingly unpredictable, there's a value in knowing that you can feed your family from your own backyard. They also help reduce food waste by consuming kitchen scraps and can even aid pest control, making them an ideal companion for gardens. I understand that some might be concerned about potential noise, odors, or property values, but these concerns can be managed with thoughtful planning, proper coop design, and a reasonable number of chickens per household. Many communities, many communities have allowed chickens, have found that the benefits, fresh eggs, educational opportunities for children, and a greater sense of community far outweigh any minor inconveniences. In the end, this is about more than just chickens. It's about returning to our roots and embracing the American way of growing our own food, providing for our families, and keeping control of our own food security. It's about honoring God's creation and being responsible stewards of the land he has entrusted to us. I ask for your support in making New Windsor a place where families can return to these time-honored values, where we can once again live off the land and help one another build a more resilient, sustainable future. Let us take this step together and bring glory to God through the stewardship of his gift. Thank you, and may God bless you all.
Thank you. Can you give us your comments? And I'll give them to Councilwoman Schultz, who's Chair of the Community Enhancement, and I'll let her take a look at it and look at her current code. And you have a person on your committee to discuss it a little bit and then bring back some more information for us. All right?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your concern and willingness to work with us. So, thank you. She'll be looking on it and come back with a recommendation, I'm sure, for the council. Thank you.
We also have Mr. Snyder.
All right, Mr. Snyder? Name and address, please, sir.
Okay, I'm Phil Snyder, twenty-three, twenty-three, March, New Windsor. The reason, my first thing I want to do is I want to thank Neil and the council for the letter that you have approved. Okay? And Neil's exactly right. We all have to face this thing as a community and under one. We have to face it together, okay? And we have to fight this thing. It's not gonna be an easy fight. And let me tell you a little bit about where I am right now. I was appointed onto the tri-county, I'm on the tri-county coalition Stop NPRP, which is a subcommittee of the Stop NPRP, which is the main group that's fighting this. And I just want to take a second to tell you about the organization. These people got their act together. Stop NPRP is the main organization opposing the project. That organization represents Carroll, Baltimore, and Frederick Counties. I'm not familiar with Baltimore and Frederick, but we also have a local committee here, which is in your handout. It's called the Wakefield Valley Citizens to Protect Farmland Coalition. And this local committee, and we'll meet on Saturday, is, we give our feedback to the main Stop NPRP committee. Any money that's raised, to my knowledge, goes up to the main group. And to my knowledge, the main group does have legal representation. I'm still learning about this, so I don't want to say anything that I'm not sure of. But I can tell you that there is a lot of moving parts here, and I'm learning. I would recommend, if you really want to learn more about it, to go onto their website. The PSC, the Power Line Company, was it PG? Yes, PSEG.
Yes, PSEG.
Go on there. They have a lot of information. Of course, most of it's very biased towards the project. It's important to know, this is a federal project, okay? This is not state money. This is not county money. This is federal money, okay? That is funding this project right through our D.C. That makes it very tough to fight in many different ways. Our coalition, the board that I'm on, and I represent the Carroll County Farm Bureau on the board, we have, when we meet, we talk about ideas and things and ways to get PR, to spread the word. I will say that there is a very important meeting next Tuesday night at the Ag Center. It starts at six o'clock.
Wednesday night.
Wednesday night, I'm sorry. Wednesday night, yeah, thank you. From six to eight-thirty, it is a PSEG meeting, and there's gonna be a whole bunch of people there, I'm sure. And it would not hurt if maybe somebody from the town represented the town there. There is going to be a formal press conference before that meeting. And it's gonna have a lot of our legislators and the Farm Bureau Director speak to the media. There's gonna be a lot of media there, okay? And I'm trying to be quick, so I know I've got a timeline here. So, the PSC makes the decision whether this project moves forward. PSEG has not applied to the PSC yet, okay? They're anticipating application to be submitted in December or January. If the PSC turns this project down, game over. If the PSC gives their thumbs up to this project, then we have a total different fight. They would issue something called a Certificate of Necessity, which is something else you could read online about and get the definition. That certificate allows PSEG to legally begin negotiations with landowners and to legally, potentially, go through eminent domain. And we don't want to go there. I'm hoping we don't have to go there. But I will tell you, in my opinion, these guys are geared up for a fight. I think the legal representation they have is professional enough where it probably can practice in the federal court system. And there is a lot of money coming in through donations that if we have to go there, everybody's committed to going there. Okay, so I would welcome comments. You have my email here. Jenny Teeter is the president of the local organization. Call me, send me emails. If I don't have the answer for you, I certainly will try to get the answer to you. And again, I want to thank the town very much for your support and help me with this.
And thank you for being real responsive to all my emails and text messages, so.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other residents concerned?
Yes, sir.
All right, announcements. My mayor on the Square Food Drive, Friday, November twenty-second, nine to four. It helps the New Windsor Food Bank, which is administrated at St. Paul United Methodist Church. November work session will be November twentieth. And hopefully, we can get a couple more students. The December Town Council meeting will be a shadow meeting. There you have one or two sign up for it, so hopefully they'll get some more for that time. In closing, before we go to closed session, I normally don't recognize any residents when they pass. However, I feel I should recognize former delegate Don Elliott, who passed away recently. And if you don't know about delegate Don Elliott, he lived in New Windsor, served, I think, like twenty-four to thirty years in the House of Delegates. And when we put in the new wastewater treatment plant, we were facing a four-point-eight-million-dollar bill with no funding from the state, no funding from the Bay Restoration Fund. And he and I worked together, and he got, at that time, Town Manager Wally Brown and I, a meeting with Governor O'Malley's staff. And we were given a five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant before we even had to make the first payment. That, to me, was not enough, so I worked with Don. He got a meeting then with Town Manager Frank Schaefer and I, with Delegate Maggie McIntosh, who was the Chair of the Environmental Matters Committee, which gives out a lot of money for MDE and water and sewer projects. And we met with her, and I showed her my spreadsheet, that Frank had his blessing on a spreadsheet from him. He was known as Mr. Spreadsheet himself. And which resulted in Don giving me a call one Saturday morning and saying that he had gotten Maggie to give, get two million dollars for our loan reduction. And I still wasn't happy with that. So, at that time, we were still not getting any money from the Bay Restoration Fund. It was only for what I call the sixty-six or sixty-seven big boys, where I think you had to discharge five-hundred-thousand gallons a day. We were at seventy-five or eighty-thousand dollars, so we weren't eligible for the Bay Restoration Fund, which I thought that was unfair to small towns like us when the financial hardship hits us harder than bigger city. So, he had an amendment to the bill for the Bay Restoration to be, all municipalities be eligible for, be fair and equitable. And then, unfortunately, that was passed unanimously. And then, he lost in that next year's election. But then I went to Delegate Susan Krebs and said, you know, we need more money. And she was able to work with Maggie and got us another million dollars. So, because of Don's work, we got over three-and-a-half million dollars for that loan. So, I just thought, and then also with the quarry, people around New Windsor, around the quarry, so that their wells were protected. I forget the language of it, but he passed legislation that is now statewide that if a quarry affects a well, they have to, they're responsible for that.
So, that's why it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, he was very instrumental in our well-being here in New Windsor. So, keep his family and your thoughts and prayers. So, does anybody have any other announcements? All right. Then I need a motion to move to closed session per general provisions, Article three dash three oh five B three, consider acquisition of real property for a public purpose. Do you hear that motion?
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, sing by me, sing aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So, carry. All right, we'll just wait until everybody clears out, and we'll just have the meeting here, because it's gonna be quite a few people. Thank you all for coming. Thank you. You're one of our youngest members to ever attend a Town Council meeting. Not sure the youngest, but one of the younger.